I'm gonna continue to troubleshoot, but for now, we Bob and Terry specifically, we have everybody on Zoom on the computer here.
Okay. Okay. Good morning. This is Commissioner Vinnie Winston, May twenty second, two thousand and twenty four. Commissioner Clark and Commissioner England are present. Commissioner Wozmac is to be joining us by Zoom, but currently is not present. Public comments. Do we have any public here? Seeing none, gonna move on. Elected officials and department heads. Doug, do you have anything for us this morning?
No, I do not. All set.
Okay, and I know that you do. Captain, do you have something from the department head? Okay, go ahead. Fire away.
Commissioners, back in last August, I brought to your attention that we weren't getting any premium staff picking up our three minor holidays defined by our CBA. And you all gave me permission for the next two years to do a double pay to coincide with what happens with the CBA. We were able to get a few extra folks picking up last Labor Day, but statistically now, here where we're at now is last year for the minor holiday of Memorial Day, we only had five premium pickups. This year we have ten staff, which doesn't paint the whole picture because, for example, one staff is picking up a double on that day. So it's almost like two two people picking up. So we've doubled the amount of folks that are picking up the premium holidays to give some relief to our staff and ensure we got adequate stack of coverage. So the first check-in for you from the first major, oh, sorry, first minor holiday with double pay for premiums is very favorable. So as I mentioned, you said we could do a two-year trial. So this is the first report of of those holidays.
Good.
We have here. The other mention I just wanted to say was that we've been talking about the minimum staffing rule for quite some time and seeing how it has evolved. Okay.
I would just kind of say.
That's great.
I was gonna ask you, Roger.
So it has gone into play. Obviously, you're aware of that. We have to make plans by August eighth. We have to have a plan in place. Some of it will come through during the budget process because we're gonna have to again look at the RNs. The biggest issue from the whole staffing mandate that's impacting us and everyone else frankly, it's the RNs. We have insufficient RNs. We need one twenty-four seven and we need a specific point five-five hours per resident day every day and we can struggle with that, particularly on weekends and if we can't count our nurse management team. So we really have to focus in on that.
Did you get an answer on whether or not we're rural?
It appears we are not rural because from the September proposed rule compared to what was put into place in April, officially May, the federal government has decided to look at rural in terms of counties, stipulating that in the rural, if you're in a county that's fifty thousand or less.
That's not, that's not even rural. That's population.
Population. That's not even.
Ridiculous.
So it's not, it's they're not basing it on rural, they're basing it on population side.
County.
What they're saying, what they're saying is because there's less people, it's it's more landmass and so that's rural and their minds. That's what they're saying, right?
Yeah.
I don't, I what what that Sullivan County?
Maybe.
Yes, I'll let like forty-six.
Yeah. So it means that we don't have the significant amount of time to get up to speed. So we're gonna be bringing some radical suggestions to this type of budget process because we don't have a choice. We either have to continue to close more beds. But the biggest thing is we have to have mine twenty-four seven and we don't have that. We have one on call. We have to have a radical approach to making this happen or we're gonna be subject to huge sanctions, fines, penalties.
Yeah.
Well, what what's. Same protocol. I mean, we're we're, I mean, there's a lot of other places that, I mean, that they're gonna, you know, start penalizing two quarters, two quarters of the nursing homes.
Yes, actually, it's still in the high percentage of power facilities that cannot currently wake the minimum staffing numbers. CMS and Youngson's called them the Untouchables. They really have become beyond any branch or the government's ability to control. And with the president just directing them to go ahead and make this mandate happen, they more than jumped on it, in my opinion. So.
Anyone reached out to our senators and?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
We have all of them signed on. We are the, we're the only state in the nation that actually has everyone signed on. Both Congress people, both senators have signed on against it. Three officially signed. Custer was wait, was Custer on it?
I think she was delayed, but I think she.
She eventually did?
Yeah, I think I saw that she did.
Okay.
But maybe not, maybe not with the initial three, but I think.
Yeah. So we are the only state in the nation that did that. And that was partly through our work with the healthcare association. You know, I'm we are part of the healthcare association. I'm actually right now the vice chair of the healthcare association. As part of that, a lot of our dues this year are going towards collectively with all the states having the American Healthcare Association actually sue.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Joe against it. So right now, we're just exhausting some of the other low-hanging fruit because there is, there's motions out there to say that this isn't even possible and that this should be walked backwards. But anything that we know that we've got going forward in Congress or Senate, it's just gonna get overturned by, and it's just, we've not been able to do to it. So we know that that's not gonna go anywhere. So we know we have to have a huge fight on our hands on this one.
We don't really have much to give to say.
It's not gonna happen before that sixty-day rule impacts us. So I still, my team and I will still have to come up with an actual plan, which is a real pain in the butt. But what we are hopeful is that we can end this up with a pass so that that two-year mark, that's where it doesn't impact us. And I know Jack would say, oh, it's never gonna happen. But we can't bank on it. We have to make the plans.
Yeah. Call you, come on in. Do we just, the doors open. Come on in.
You're ready.
So I just want to give you the heads up that if it officially goes, you'll see budgetary resulting request in the budget that'll be significant in our effort to try to make this work because we just can't bank on the lawsuit. Anything else about? That was my non.
Yeah, no, I'm I'm working it through my head because we continually, I know what the that your thoughts are gonna be. I know where your thoughts are probably gonna go and just like it's never, it's never ending and it's, I blame it on climate change and I blame it on COVID that we're here today. Climate change because all the flooding that's occurred and I mean, we get stories about down south where people are left in the nursing home and and it was, you know, all this COVID with some of the things that went on there. And they blame instead of say, understanding that the environments that you're working with. And it's like, I still struggle with the fact that we have, New Hampshire has some of the lowest efficiency rates in the country, had some of the top level, it rated for some of the top level care. And our reimbursement rates are some of the lowest in the country. I mean, we're doing something right here, but because they lumped everybody in with all the other places that are screwing up and trying to make a buck because that's where the industry went, it went because there was at one point money to be earned from and in this type of care. It's just, it's just frustrating to me because here we are today. And so you're gonna have to go and do what you need to do to bring forward to us to say this is what you need to do in the hopes that the lawsuit, you know, you know, at least slows it or puts it on hold for a period of time until they can have a situation worked out. So thank you. Hi, Jack.
Good morning.
Sorry. So next item up is the next agenda item number one-one-six-seven-six. The copy of contract approval. Aaron's here to discuss and vote to approve a proposed copy of contract. From, oh, is that Rico? Rico?
Yeah, Rico. So I, we, we had met with Rico a couple of weeks ago, Davis, Amanda and I. They came out with a spreadsheet. We created a new document that really compares our current contracts with their proposed contract. So the first four tables, what we did was we broke down the copiers to location and in each table, you have the location of the copier, you have to type whether it's color, whether it's black or white, and then you have the 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 monthly average monthly volume, print volume, that is copiers doing eighty-five. And what we did was with that volume, we just went back over the past twelve months that took him on to that number. And then we have in the last column, it's the recommendations from Rico with what we should do with the copier. So if we look at Maplewood, you know, the first floor, they're recommending the same specs. The ground floor, they're looking at increasing the pages per minute from forty-five to seventy, and then the other three copiers is the same. They're gonna be a newer version, just, you know, but but basically the specs are obviously the same. We'll get down to thirty-three West Street. They're proposing that we, that based off of the print volume, we can go to a smaller machine. There's some savings there, a slower machine. And we'll do on the twelve fourth street. There's one upgrade. So finance is looking at, we would be upgrading the memory and then the regional prosecutor, we would be going to a slower copier there. And then at eight twenty-five, we have three copiers that we would go with a slower machine. When we get down to the fifth table, contract costs. So what we did was in the first column, we broke down what our current cost is, right? So so currently we're paying twenty-six, eighty-nine, twenty-six a month. The annual cost down is thirty-two thousand dollars. We do have overages. So when we get to the next page, we can talk about that. But with the overage cost, it brings us to thirty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The new contract with their recommendations, the monthly cost is slightly higher. The annual cost obviously is more to thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. We don't know. So when we, when we looked at the annual the 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 average monthly volume, we don't have that for the new contract, but it would be thirty-six. So anyways, it would be thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. And then what we also did was we added another table. If we were to keep all the copiers the same, what would that cost be? With the exception of, let me back up just a little bit. With the exception of the ground floor at Maplewood, we'd still get the the faster copier and the memory upgrade for finance. So you'd have those two upgrades, but all the other copies would be the same. It does go up slightly, so there's an additional hundred and five dollars and sixty-eight cents a month that it would cost us to keep everything the same. And then annually, we'll look back to that twelve hundred and sixty-eight dollars on top of, on top of that. So when we go to the next page, so our, 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 and so our monthly volume is, so over the past twelve months, we had printed off sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine colored copies in seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine black and white pages. So we'll go to the next table. So the current contracts that we have, we can print up to eighty-nine thousand black and white copies or eight thousand, five hundred colored copies. Anything over that, there's an overage cost. Okay. What they're proposing that we do is we reduce the black and white the black and white copies to seventy-nine thousand, two hundred, and we increase the color copies to sixteen thousand, five hundred. And that would essentially capture the overage cost that we had over the past twelve months. So these costs are, these are without paper. They're special without paper, but it does include other parts, services, yeah, all that, training, everything. Okay, so the leases for fifteen, fifteen-one months, it'll begin in July, in July. The costs are fixed. There's two other contracts that will be ending shortly. So those those will be rolled into this new contract. There are three other contracts that can enroll into just having one contract. There are separate costs that go along with that. But it was, it was based, so EMS, there's a few years because they just signed that new contract. You know, that when that expires, some part of that, we just, we just. So so anyways, yeah, so they're looking at replacing sixteen copiers. They'll all be brand new. All parts, labor, toner, staples, it was all included and of course, removal of the old equipment, the installation.
What's the average age of the old?
Well, they were put in when the contract began, which I don't count that. Not sure if I'll have the current contract for it. I'm sorry, it's right here. So the installed age, twenty-twenty. Yeah, so they were all put in.
But like, but like anything, you know, at one point we had the laptops and we had the, you know, the, you know, that, you know, now we have the phones that have everything in it. This, this is the type of thing that's changing constantly, getting more efficient, getting more energy efficient, all that jazz. So anytime we do a new contract, we always upgrade a new product and that's just part of the contract.
It's all these, you know, white, black, and email. They're all, it's all gonna be the same as what we have. The only difference when we're talking about downgrading some of the copiers is we're all talking about speed, everything else is. So if you actually think about it in another way, you know, if we do the downgraded copier, the slower copiers, and they do what they recommend, the cost is pretty much gonna be the same. Okay, because.
Providing, providing that, you know, we don't print more
next year than we did this year. If the print volume is roughly the same, then the cost will be roughly the same. But so their estimates are based on one year of usage.
That's as far as, that's what I did. So I went back one year.
Yeah, just one year. We recompensate. I think what we can do with.
Yeah, I mean, you know, one of the, one of the things that we were looking at is, you know, I think there is a, there is a disconnect. So if you're thinking about a print volume, it's hard to know where we are, right? You know, people who are printing in these departments, they're not really thinking about overage costs or things of that nature. There are things that we can do to you know, to manage that. You know, the software out there, there's ways that we can make printing in color a little bit more difficult for the end user, things of that nature.
Yeah, it is what it is. People need a better job.
Exactly, right. So exactly.
So our workload or our copy load, whatever, it's not really decreasing. Is it, is it increasing or decreasing?
I don't, I don't have that information, but I consider we'll go back in twenty-twenty and. It would, my, my, I, we've grown.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so we, I would expect, and we didn't have connected families in New Hampshire. That's a copier that is there. I mean, we didn't have EMS. That's a copier that's there. So in my world, it's grown, but it's grown because I would guess of the, of the growth of the, of the county. Okay. Can we have a motion to move forward to allow Aaron to sign the what?
Which contract?
Yeah, Rico. Which one do you want? Do you wanna have the old contract? Do you wanna have the new one where they, they put in the overage? Is that what you're saying?
Right. So so they proposed to you, so if we were to keep all of the equipment the same, same speed, the exception.
Oh, that's what I had, yeah.
The memory upgrade for finance. It's slightly more at thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars. Okay. If we go with their recommendations, that again is based on the print volume. The, the total of theirs is thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and six dollars. So it's a little bit cheaper. Ultimately, it's, it's your call. Which direction you wanna go?
Essentially, when we were talking about this, I think the only thing I had pointed out is that, I mean, looking at the number of prints that these do, that the recommendations are to go lower, it probably makes sense. I think they just need to be notified because they will, they will recognize that it's slower. So I, I think, you know, that was really, you know, the, the initial, I mean, you know, sometimes you have to reevaluate that you don't need a Cadillac when you need a.
Well, what it does, yeah, what it does is it adds seconds, not minutes, but seconds, depending on the copy, how many copies you're putting in to, you know, if you go from fifty copies a minute to you know, forty copies a minute, then it's ten seconds you're adding to, to your day.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's like with us, I, I can tell over time, I've recognized that the finance copier obviously got increased, which was like, wow, that's great. I mean, because we have a lot of stuff coming off that printer. You know, when you're printing budget books and stuff like that, having those added numbers, pages per minute really make a difference. So I mean, I would never recommend going down for finance and that's not what's happening here. But for a department that does, you know, only does, you know, I, based on this analysis, you know, couple hundred or whatever a day, it really isn't that big a deal. I think, as I said, I think it just, they need to know that that direction. And, you know, I think always evaluating if there's ways to save money makes sense. So.
So how much have we done? Is there, like, is there like mileage on a ready card? Well, it is. So I can't explain you what that is. So with the new contract, overages for every page you print is point zero zero four five cents per black and white and it's point zero four five per color. So it's small, but it's slightly, it's, it's, but where it adds up is it's just based off of volume, right? So, you know, that, that's the reason why. So when we looked at what we did for the past twelve months, you know, those numbers, that was forty, forty-four hundred dollars in over the costs, countywide. So, but that's, so that's more than the difference. More than the difference. You said that if we go the way we are, we're gonna go thirty-eight. So what we did was we, we didn't, we didn't meet the black and white threshold. So we're gonna lower that number down, but because we printed sixteen thousand, five hundred colored copies, and we don't have budget for eighty-five, we're gonna bring that number up. So what's coming down, what's coming up based off the past twelve, twelve months? We should be pretty much right there. But again, you know, if employees are hired, there's growth. It is possible that you could drop that, it could be on the charts. And then might not. It's hard to, it's hard to look into the future to see, to see how things go. Well, like I was saying, there are ways you can manage it. I don't know necessarily if we're quite there yet. But sorry, it is a little too weak. A little bit, but you know, questions are good. I'll just go back and say that the, you know, the, the difference between the two contracts is twelve hundred dollars or a hundred and five dollars a month. So we're not talking about, you know, a huge, you know, price, price difference here. So the other thing that I had contemplated was if there was a particular department that really needed to have the speed at that point, the contract, you know, maybe we would go to the, you know, with a copier with the same specs, the cost increase might be if there was one particular department that really needed that.
I think, I think if you allow us to move forward with the, 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 the one that puts forward the changes to the downgrades of, of, of speed with the caveat that we just alert those that are affected by it, and once that's done, we can move forward. And that would be how we can move forward.
So the downgrade contract is.
I second.
Oh.
All right. Any questions? Seeing Commissioner Wozmac.
Hi.
Commissioner Clark, England.
Hi.
Commissioner Clark. Okay.
You know, the the only thing, the only thing I'll throw in is that, you know, the concept of distinguishing color copies from black and white is a vestige from the seventies. And I think going forward, I, I wouldn't be inclined to tolerate that because I think it's foolishness. But from a technology point of view, I don't. These days, I, I think that we should be able to get an all-in maximum number without distinguishing color from black and white. But that's just me. Next.
All right. Speaking of the seventies, back in the seventies, we would have been talking about memory rock machines and carbon paper.
Yeah, and blue fingers.
Yes.
Aaron, do you suppose, Aaron, do you suppose the reason why they distinguish between the color and the black and white is because they supply the toner as part of the contract?
Yeah, that's, and color and toner for colors is more expensive. And that's why you're seeing it being more expensive to print color.
That's, and I mean, I, it's something I'm gonna actually look into on this end of things because like I was working on one of the department's payroll this week. And when we printed their time cards, they all print off color. And it's like, I don't need them in color, but I, it's not like I even think about when I just hit print that. So it's like, I don't know if there's a way that IT can help me do something so that I'm not, that it turns and defaults to black and that I only print color when I ask it to. Because I know that there's also an option that they've provided me that allows me to print to color copier. But even when I don't, sometimes whatever's coming off wants, just decides to print off color and I don't even know it until I get to the copier.
There should be, Cheryl, that option because I, I know I have it. I can't tell you how that was set up though, but I definitely noticed that it switches back off of color and I have to choose color every time. So there must be a way to do it.
Yeah, so I'm.
There is, there is a way to do that. We, we actually had that conversation, Samantha and I. There are a lot of other examples that we could cite, you know, if we're printing wrapping and voice, it prints off in color. Is that really needed? Black and white, if it wasn't fine. I think when we start talking about like documents that are gonna go to well, staff or residents, you know, those, those need to be in color. There definitely needs to be. There, well, there should be some mechanism where it makes it just a little bit more difficult. It just defaults to black and white. I don't know necessarily if every department is set up that way. Well, what about the machines when they come up of the factory? They, you know, the settings, are they default to color? I think Cheryl's right. I think IT has to get involved with that. So I think it's like a printer preference. So something we send is calling up and say, before you deliver these, put the default on black. What do you think? I, I can look into that, but I thought that maybe like our IT department would, would have to get involved and change and some sort of like, you know, administratively change the, the print preferences. So it automatically defaults to black and white, then you physically have to, you know, change it. There would need to be, you know, some communications that go out to let people know that that would take place. You don't wanna print something in black and white and then say, oh, it's a black and white, one in color. You throw that out and then you print it in color. Right? So.
Sorry if you already mentioned this, but even if there's like a little hyperlink to, to something like four letters that are blue because you printed it back, so that counts as an entire color copy.
Yeah.
Regardless of how small it is. So getting away from that default, you know, fully.
While we're at it, some notifications, you know, so we, of course, we should print on both sides of the paper.
Yeah.
That's a different line item.
Okay.
There are definitely ways to say money.
All right. Thank you very much. So we at this time, if you don't mind, we are going to go in. So we, at this time, um, if you don't mind, we are going to go into a non-public session. Uh, Dave Morrison from the Nenek Economic Development Corporation is here. Cheryl, if you wanna stay on, that's fine. Doug, I apologize without you. Thank you. Um, so this would be a non-public session, uh, presenting to RSA ninety-one dash A colon three. Consideration acquisition sale lease real or real personal property, which is discussed in public with likely been a party, a party whose interests are a priority to those of general communities. So, uh, Commissioner, um, yeah, can I have a motion to go into non-public?
A move, sir.
Okay, Commissioner, uh, uh, Wozmac.
Aye.
Commissioner England.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
We are. Um, non, it's a non-public session presenting to RSA ninety-one A three colon, uh, colon three to the consideration, uh, no, sorry, non-public session presenting to RSA ninety-one A three to a dismissal promotion or a compensation of any public employee for disciplining of such or discipline of such plenty, or the investigation of any charges against him or unless employee affected has a right to public meeting and request the meeting be open. Um, and so, uh, motion to go back into non-public.
Sure.
And, and second, Commissioner Wozmac.
Aye.
Commissioner England.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Mm-hmm.
And now we're going to see if, um, whoever's gonna be joining.
Back in, back in public.
That's what I meant. Yeah, that's, but, all right, I'm having a hard time with a few words here, all right? Um, all right.
Chad, no, this is happening?
Yes.
Well, uh, well, if we're gonna do the minutes, we have to recognize that we did take a vote, make a decision to make uh, the interim chief, the permanent chief of EMS, and then we can seal the minutes until the notice goes out. But we'd need a motion to seal the minutes of, for, uh, uh, another thirty days, something like that, right?
Okay.
Remove.
Second.
All right, Commissioner, uh, Wozmac.
Aye.
Commissioner England.
Aye.
And Commissioner Clark, all right. So, and now do you need a separate motion for the, the making him, or is that the one that, is that what we're sealing?
Well, I think it needs, I think, from a statutory point of view, it needs a separate, uh, motion to seal the minutes for uh, thirty days, uh, in order to allow administration to carry out the intent of the vote.
Okay. All right.
So I vote aye.
All right.
But we just did that.
No, you voted on the, on the motion to make him chief. Now that this is the motion to seal the minutes for thirty days so that they can tee up the notice and let everybody know.
All right.
Okay.
All right, I, all right, we're good.
Aye.
All right, I think we're good. All right, I'm, I'm gonna move on to my report, um. And Cheryl just went blank, but, um, if she's there, if she could come back on, that would be great.
She's still on.
Yeah, no, I know, but she's, um, just, well, I'll, I'll skip down for a second, and, oh, there she is, is she.
I was finishing my banana, you gave me a compliment.
The record will so reflect.
So, uh, we received our, our numbers for pro share, uh, this week. Uh, actually, yes, yesterday or the day before, and, um, so, yeah, I wanted to have Cheryl just, uh, bring you up to speed where we're at with pro share.
So, good morning, everybody. Um, we received our numbers. As you may know, it's, they, what they do is they give us an estimate based on, in pre, so they, every year it's an estimate based on what they expect our twelve-month revenues are gonna be. Um, and what our estimated Mquip twelve-month revenues are gonna be from July one of the previous year to June thirtieth of the current year. So they look at what's been paid, and then they extrapolate it from there, and then they look at our cost report um, numbers that were submitted, um, that have not been audited yet, of course, and then they then give us a, an inflation factor increase, recognizing that costs probably go up to, you know, based on inflation, and then there's a formula that basically then determines how many of our residents are Medicaid, and the difference between our costs, our estimated costs, and our estimated revenues um discounted by the percentage of our Medicaid residents is essentially what they uh, pay us for a pro share. There's another, there's another factor in this, and it's on a previous year reconciliation because they're always working with estimates. They have to, I can really true up the, the numbers again. And, um, in this particular year, we had an actual positive number because they underestimated um, our, 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 our gap between revenues and expenses, and, um, but overall, just so you're aware, we are getting five million two hundred fifteen thousand ninety-nine dollars. That's our pro share amount for twenty twenty-four, um, as compared to twenty twenty-three. Five million four thirty-five, five twenty. So we are seeing a, a slight decrease of two hundred and twenty thousand four twenty-one, but it is still a a good substantial pro share payment that we have already budgeted. Um, thirty million fifty oh ninety-three. So we have an excess unbudgeted that Chris and I will be meeting on to bring back further recommendations of two million one sixty-five zero zero six.
So I think we should stop calling it pro share and start calling it continuum of care so that we can.
Yeah, yeah, well, and, and the, the great thing is, is this is, uh, you know, our fund balance currently is, is where it needs to be. Uh, you know, we have a, a, a area between twelve and, uh, twelve and eighteen percent, we're at eighteen percent or a little over eighteen percent, actually, and that's without the two million. Uh, so we're in a good place overall. We're healthy. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, and.
Yes.
And so we just, we just need to, uh, figure out how we wanna move forward, and we'll come back to you with that, uh, in the near future.
Yeah, and although our, you know, e- even though our, um, our fund balance is healthy, because we have in the past set aside um, pro share to offset future taxes, we, you know, on some level, we have to keep that rotation going, because it, it's what's been able to keep our fund balance healthy.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think it politically, uh, if there's an opportunity to slide some of this money to help cover the EMS uh, costs and, uh, make sure that we can keep control of, of, of our tax rate. That's kind of a win-win.
Yeah, the, the, the reality is, is that, um, this, this added funding is, is, and, well, I mean, and I say this because I wanna remind people uh, that this is because, uh, the, um, delivery network, and, uh, integrated delivery network uh, contract that loosened up funding so that we could, we could use funding to help with um, substance abuse, with mental health, with primary care, with elder care, all the things, and so, even because when we first, when I first started, we were about one point eight million dollars of revenue coming back, but because of the work that, um, uh, Commissioner, and then Commissioner Tumpus and Deputy, uh, Deputy, uh, Commissioner, uh, Myers, who became Commissioner, were able to do, they were able to loosen this money up that was ours that should come back to us. And, um, and we were able to get all the counties to agree to, to do this integrated delivery network for a period of time. And then once that went, that, once that, those, that period of time went away, those monies kept coming into the counties, and that's been a boon for us, uh, for helping us to move forward. So the purpose of this was all about delivery and network care. So, I mean, that's what we're doing. So I would agree with you, Jack, but I think it's something that we need to continue to tell the story, because I think people just, uh, forget about it, and, 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 and run, don't understand that this is what was put in, in, in place in the first, to help bend the Medicaid curve, to help deliver, uh, develop, delivery of network at a higher level, and that's what I think we've done with EMS, so.
You, you almost wonder if it wouldn't make some, some sense at some level to reorganize the county chart, uh, table of organization. Uh, and essentially create a, a division of, uh, uh, integrated, uh, healthcare delivery, under which would be, uh, outside agencies, um, Maplewood, EMS.
Drug court, behavioral court.
Drug court, behavioral court, and.
Justice.
To structurally present what the county does uh, building on the spine of, uh, integrated delivery network, because they are all, they are all together, and and I wonder if it would be a visual aid and a funding aid going forward uh, to show that all of these, all of these programs are, are, are part of an integrated delivery network constructed uh, 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 for that purpose to create such a thing and integrate the activities.
No, I don't disagree. I, I actually like that idea.
And you know, it's somewhat just, uh, illustrative, uh, but we could begin talking about it more, and then maybe that makes it easier to kind of set the stage for a change in the funding of EMS a little bit.
Right.
E- even if it would mean, you know, putting money into a capital reserve account for the integrated delivery network for any purpose, hmm, gee, including EMS, but also Maplewood, or, uh, drug court, or connected families. Something like that. So I'm just trying to, you know, we, we've been moving towards integrated delivery uh, and, and, in many ways, we already have it. We just, we don't, we don't, we don't actually structure our operation that way, so maybe we could.
Yeah, no, I, I don't, I don't disagree. You know, I, I wrote down the other day what we already have in place for programming outside of what, what we're, uh, told we need to be have in place, or statute-driven. Uh, drug court, mental health court, EMS, connected families, New Hampshire, Handyman, Shepherd's Program, restorative justice, restorative community now, uh, outside agency, UNH Cooperative Extension, Community Power, uh, new, uh, the new courthouse. I mean, we kept that. I mean, think about that. We helped with the whole process of ma- maintaining the courthouse here in Keene and not moving everything to Jeffrey. Uh, regional prosecutor, sheriffs, um, sheriff is now working in towns, he's working in schools. And, um, and we're looking at, you know, upgrading, and we upgraded the dispatch. Um, but grants, we've got the training program that's, uh, that's happening as, you know, currently. Um, where we have, what, thirteen or fourteen individuals taking in this next course.
Is that happening now?
It's happening, it's happening now. And then, um, so we've got a lot of things that we're doing, and we've got on the, uh, you know, we, we're talking about county transit, you know, not that we're doing anything, but we're parts of that discussion. We're parts of the, um, we're talking about veterans, we're talking about housing, we're talking about daycare, we've been.
Well, and, and even Smart Ride as a part of the integrated delivery network.
Correct.
Yeah, so any of that.
Yeah, it's, it's just.
You get the idea.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think, yeah, I, I actually like that idea a lot, and I'll work on that, um.
So did you say there was a new name for restorative justice?
I, I, we, we're calling it more restorative community, because it's doing, he's, he's out doing it in the community, he's working with schools. He is working up the DOC. He's, you know, working in other places that, that are asking to, to, to come in and, and work with us, so.
Yeah, and justice doesn't have to be a capital J associated with the courts or prosecution. It could be really social justice, so any event, but.
Yeah. So, um, so just moving on, you know, uh, when we were up at, um, uh, Primex last week, I had an opportunity to meet with, uh, or have the conversation with Ty Gagny, who is the CEO of Primex, who, um, um, we, I brought up, and then Jack joined me about the, um, opportunity to developing, uh, regional supervisory academies. You know, they have supervisory academies that you can send people to for a period of time to get this training. The problem is, you can't get anybody in, and we've got, because they're so busy, everybody wants it. And so I, and we brought up the idea, he liked the idea. He's actually, I'm gonna, we're working, Davis is working with his, his person up there uh, to get a time where we can go up and really talk about what that would look like regionally, but once a year, if we could offer up a regional supervisory academy, and maybe it doesn't have to go through, um, Primex, maybe they can partner with others. You know, we talked to the Richards Group, who does our healthcare and our dental care, and, um, they were willing to, or brokers, I should say, uh, our health and dental, and, um, they were, they have an individual who does a lot of training up there, who's willing to do something like this, and maybe they can partner with somebody. Just because I know, just with the county, I could get fifteen people in. And I know the city could probably have another five or more, and there's towns that probably have people. We could be at thirty real quickly of, of, of a class, and I think it just benefits us if we think outside the box and, and tie like, like what we were talking about.
So there, there's a classroom shortage? Is it just in Primax or?
It's, you mean like not having enough, well, they just don't have enough manpower to do the classes on a regular basis, because this is a side thing that somebody actually has a real job that they're doing too, they're, so.
So how would that work?
Well, one, one of, one of the thoughts would be, we get the curriculum from Primax uh, and feed it to local trainers, uh, make adjustments to it, and then just let them deliver the program.
Yeah. And just go from there. I mean, just something, because, you know, e- every, everybody's dealing with the same issue we're dealing with, and that is retirements are occurring and young people are moving up, and we wanna, we wanna plan for success, and if we don't have the trains available for, to people to, you know, get in, you know, think about the captains at the EMS, all of them would benefit from the supervisory ca- academy, the DCs, uh, would, would, would benefit from it, and so, you know, if we can't get them in, but we also have the DOC, we have up here, we have a lot of new people taking on positions. And if we, you know, we need to come up with a plan on how we can best support them, you know, we just, you just heard how we've done that with the chief. I wanna do that across the board, and this is one of the mechanisms that we think we can do. And so they're, they're willing to have that conversation, they're wanting to have that conversation, and they're actually excited, Ty was actually excited by the opportunity, so that's a good thing. Okay, um, just to remind you, um, this week is, uh, we're gonna be, you're gonna be serving and celebrating Nurses Week, which I believe was last week. Um, and this week is EMS week, so there's been activities going on all week down at EMS uh, that, that they've been doing. I mean, every, every day this week, they've been cooking breakfast for each, all the teams. Um, they've been, yesterday I was there after our meeting, they, uh, cooked up some nachos, they had some, I, um, uh, Italian, I see people come, they've had some other things, and they're doing all kinds of different things. They recognize the crew, and, and they're very appreciative of it. Actually, some people actually came in, came in, um, that weren't working to have nachos.
So it's just, I, I have serving in Maplewood today.
Yeah. What the nursing, nursing week was last week, you're serving today, because of, because of Primax, we.
You're a B for me.
Yeah, you didn't make it last week.
Chris, I think, I think, and I, I could be wrong, um, you're, you're absolutely right. Last week was National Nurses Week. But I believe this week is National Nursing Home Week.
You know, this is, this is the conspiracy. It's like a hallmark thing. It's a hallmark thing.
Yes.
So, um, so just wanna remind you, uh, Fitz, William and Troy have signed on. Thank you, Cheryl. And whoever else had that, get that done. I think Ed had a little bit of a, I, um, or one of our, our deputy chief, uh, helped get that, uh, across the board. Signed on with, uh, with, so that we can, yeah, get payment coming in, so they're, they're, they're gonna, you're gonna see that happening, uh, very soon. We have a meeting today. What time do we have the EMX meeting today? Two?
Two.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. And of course, that, this is just, uh, I mean, ongoing conversation that we're having with them. And addressing certain matters. Um, I had the opportunity to um. Uh, be part of the uh, Transit Design Project Advisory Task Force. So they're talking about how we can address isolation outside of the city of Keene. Um, and we really, Ellen, Adrian and I pressed them because they were talking Keene stuff and I'm like, you're too Keene centric. I, I don't have a desire to be part of this group if you're not gonna look at the wider. Group and they're, they, they realized that that was an issue. So this was through Southwest Regional Planning Commission. And so, um, they're just looking at different ideas on how, you know, they could structure something. They don't have a plan yet, but they're having the conversations. So we'll see how that happens and see how that goes moving forward. Um, I've been told, and I know that Sheriff will, uh, come forward. But it looks like, um, the, the, that one of the congressional spending requests that we requested. Through for portable radios, um, through the Sheriff's Department has been, uh, brought forward as something that's going to happen. But Eli, we can bring that forward and with, uh, next week when he's back from his cruise, he's on. Um, we have the DEI Committee that is meeting, um, tomorrow, uh, diversity, equity and inclusion. It's, um, gonna be a conversation. Um, we have an agenda, but we don't have an agenda and we don't want to have an agenda. We want the group to really take and, and, and sort of start having a deeper conversation and how we can best support all who come through our doors. Um, and, and value them as, as workers and strengthen the culture at the same time. So. It'll be an interesting, you know, conversation tomorrow because I think we need to create. Sometimes you have to create a safe zone of conversation so people feel comfortable. And, um, and I don't want to lead this group, I want the group to lead itself. Um, I, I, because I'm, I'm a white male, I mean, so.
Who are the people on that room?
Uh, Kim would have the list, but I, I'm, I'm not sure, but we have, we have a lot of, a lot of line staff. Uh, that, you know, from, especially from the Department of Corrections, from EMS and some other places, so that's a good thing. And we're gonna work on getting some other people, um, into, so.
Do you approximate size?
Oh, it will be as big as it wants to be initially, but, um, right now it's probably about. I'd say about, uh, twelve, the twelve people, maybe, yeah, maybe, maybe a little bit more, but about twelve. Update on Southwest Regional Commission funding. Um, so we've been able to develop a, um, a document. Um, uh, Don and I worked this week on a document, um, and, um. And, and Joe, uh, helped us with, with numbers, uh, so that we can send that up to the. Um, Director of Homeland Security, so he has a number to go to the Commissioner. Uh, go to the Governor with, when, if there's monies left over pertaining to, um. Money left over pertaining to opera funds, uh, near the end of the year, uh, the, the difference for us is that we're shovel ready with this project. So, um, that's what they like about it. I also, I, I think I told you guys this, but I'll say it again, I had a phone call with, um, Chase Tagman. Um, he, I called him, uh, probably about three weeks ago, hadn't heard from him, all of a sudden he called and apologized and saying. You're on my list and I, I just, for some reason I lost it. But, um, so we discussed stuff, so I'm sending the same document, we're gonna send up to the Director of Homeland Security. Cause he said, Chris, if you don't get it here, you don't get it, there may be opportunities in other places I can help you with, so. He's, uh, we've had a great relationship with him, um, and we're very. And he's the one that gave us changed funding, um, language so that. Nursing home could get the funding that it needed for when they had the fifty million that came out, but our project was done. He also was the one that took our lead around public safety and set aside three hundred and fifty thousand for each county. And then because other counties didn't use it, I think we got closer to one point four million, one point six million. Uh, of those, of those fundings. So he's been a great asset for us, so if he can help us with anything, that's great.
So when we had the meeting up in Concord, uh, Joe had an assignment to send along some information. Did he do that?
Yeah, well, he, he sent along the, he's, yes, we have all the information. Um, Joe, to be honest with you, um, Joe, um, worked closely with, uh, the other guy that Don brought in. That was the former Director of Homeland Security. And, um, they were able to, and he worked a lot with Motorola to get the numbers where they needed to be and then we. We took the language that we did for the congressional spending request. Fixed it up a little bit, so now we have a clear understanding of the monies we need, um, for, across the board, even in Vermont. Um, so that we can, we can, we can work on that, so yes, yeah, we did.
Okay.
So that will be, that will, we'll be having a meeting on Monday, um, and then the, then that will go out. Um, after that meeting, just to finalize everything. Um, Don's away this week, as you could see, he was, he's traveling, he was in DC, now he's in Virginia. Um. So I, I put a call, I put a call into Merrimack, still waiting, Terry. To see if they can set up a time where we can talk to them about any questions they have. You met with COOS, am I correct? And that went well?
Yeah, yeah, they had a lot of, uh, you know, pertinent questions as far as, you know, county's role and. What have you, they were, they were happy to learn that, you know, it really wasn't going to. Involve them creating a department in the county, that kind of thing. And I think it allayed a lot of their fears about. What the program really was, not sure what information is going out there, but some of it is just erroneous, so.
Is this, is this about power?
Yeah, community power, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because they, uh, COOS County is considering, uh, creating their own project, uh, because a number of the. Locations and towns that they have up there have been wanting to do it, but haven't been able to, uh, coalesce together.
And so the idea is they can just join us?
No, 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 COOS County wants to create, just like Jersey County did.
Just like Merrimack, now Merrimack has done.
Yeah, so their towns.
I see, got it.
Yeah. So that's where we're at, um, it's interesting, we, uh, there are, there is, there is, um. I'm talking to some of, some people from other towns, uh, recently. There is a desire for us, there, everybody's interested to see what the next six month, uh, number is going to be. Um, and because they're waiting to see if, if, uh. If everything's gonna fall apart, I, I think in their minds, there's like, is this real or not kind of thing? Is this eight point one one, one time shot to get people in and it's not gonna maintain and, and so.
Well, I can tell you, uh, I just had a finance meeting yesterday. And the picture was just getting prettier, especially. And the picture, the picture is getting even prettier, especially in terms of, uh, uh. Primary reserves. And, you know, that, that's that, that's that pot of money that, that we can use. Uh, in case of outages and things like that and cutting off, cutting down. Uh, uh, peaks, in rates, things like that. But because it's going so well, it's sort of developing a new policy. Whereas we're looking at not necessarily have, letting, letting that fund grow as high as we were going to. And actually buying down on a regular basis. To keep rates even lower than we could. It, it, you know, because of our standing. So, yeah, it, it's, it's real, it's not gonna fall apart. Um. It, it's like, it's a cascade effect with, with the towns wanting to join us. Uh, we've had to slow it down to the extent that, you know, it's sort of like put the damper on. Some of the enthusiasm in some of the towns because we're talking about. Every six months where, where you can launch rather than every three months. Um, so no, it's, it's absolutely, um. Something that is gonna be around for a long time, it's gonna be where we stand.
Yeah.
One thing I want to do, uh, is work with. Swansea, Marlborough and Keene about when their contract ends in twenty twenty-five. Consider either joining us or have their own, they have their own energy committees and so. It, it is to go with the program and in the interim. Um, because their rate is frozen at eleven point four cents. It makes no sense to allow their residents to have to pay that eleven four when they could be paying eight point one. So they should voluntarily, um, encourage their people.
Opt out?
Yeah, yeah, to opt out and then opt in.
Yeah.
Um, be, because it, it doesn't, it, it doesn't affect the county, I mean, the county isn't winning anything. And the, and the, and the other towns like Swansea or Keene would be losing anything, you know.
Well, it's not a contest.
No, it's not a.
You do right by your, you, you're trying to do right by your, your citizens.
Why can, how can you stand by and let your, your citizens, your rate payers pay? You know, three to four cents more for electricity when they don't have to.
Correct.
But getting that across in, in a way that doesn't seem, you know, competitive.
Like, haha.
Yeah, I don't want to do that.
Yeah, no, it's not about that, it's never been about that.
Well, it was for the.
Well, not for me.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Um, so anyway, we did.
No, I just. Alright, so no, that's a good thing. And so, yeah, once I get, once I hear back from Merrimack, then we'll set up a time.
Sure.
You know, just waiting. Um, you know the video that we showed at the, um. Uh, conference that we had last year that we hosted, maybe we had a video made?
Oh, yeah.
About the county?
Yes, right.
They, they put this into a national awards thing that they, they did. And they won the Communicator Award for Government Relations.
Wow.
So I thought that was pretty cool.
Local speakers push that to you?
Yeah, it's a local, yeah. The production house it's called, I think.
Yeah.
Wow.
And that's, that's, I think, all I have unless I've missed something that Cheryl or Davis will remind me.
No, for your work.
Then I'm gonna keep on moving forward. Um, any old business? Any new business? We are looking at dates, that's one thing of the barbecue.
Yeah.
And, and do you put it on here? Okay. Um. So, yeah, we're, uh, just looking at, I think we're looking at what, the twenty-first?
Yeah, Wednesday, August twenty-first is the likely date.
The congressional bar- barbecue.
So make sure to let me know now, oh, Jack left.
Okay.
I'll text him, but let me know soon, um. If that doesn't work for you, if you have a trip scheduled or anything like that, because we do have another date.
I don't have any more schedules.
Okay, great.
Speaking of barbecues and potlucks and things like that, my wife and I will be hosting the, the. Senior county people once again sometime during the summer and, um. And we certainly want everyone here to be able to attend, so, so. You won't still be in Puerto Rico, damn it?
I'm in this the fifth and the twelfth.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. Do you have any time away, folks?
Well, um, first of all, you won't miss anything on the twelfth because we're not having a meeting on the twelfth. So, that's good. I guess we're, 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 we're in DC on the twelfth.
And then nineteenth actually is a holiday, a real one this year, right?
What do you mean?
Juneteenth.
Oh, June nineteenth, oh, June nineteenth.
So we'll have to do, we'll have to figure that out.
They made that on my father's birthday. They're gonna celebrate my, my father's birthday on, I'm glad he didn't live long enough to have his own baby.
The, um, the, and yeah, so that, yeah, uh, you said vacation, yeah, I'll be, uh. I know Cheryl's got some time coming up, I know that I have, uh, my two weeks that I take in July, um, that will be coming up.
I, yeah, I also have something in July, mostly, and then August.
We haven't decided yet if that's, you know.
No, you haven't decided if my honeymoon is permitted. July, I still have to talk to you about it.
So you think August would be better then?
Yeah, it always is.
I do, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
I would agree.
Yeah, my, my schedule sort of, I don't know, it'll, I'm not sure if it's in flux now, but. June first, I will retire, so I'm not sure, but. I know what our regular schedule for the last ten years is, but I'm not sure going forward.
Yeah. So.
Sometime in August then, probably very similar to last year. Invited the same people on your show.
Even after you're gone, you know, even after your, you know, your, your term is up.
Yeah.
You know, you still should host it.
Should be considered. For a finite number of years.
Let's have a motion.
You don't have to be there, I mean, it's just a house. Um, alright, I'm gonna move forward, uh, both to accept the Weekly Manifest and Minutes of May first, twenty twenty-four.
So move, say.
Alright, any changes to it, all in fairs, aye?
Aye.
Alright, um, yeah, it's done. Um, calendar, anything on the calendar aside from the summer thing?
No, and, uh, you have the updated calendars, there's a few location changes, um, um, but. Nothing to worry about, next week we're at twelve Court Street.
I don't even post them anymore because they change so often.
Yeah, we, we had to move around a lot for the, the DOC scheduling, like that, but.
Okay.
When is our next DOC?
Oh, walk through. Yeah, you're gonna miss it, June fifth.
Yeah. Yeah. Um. Any general discussion for commissioners? Seeing none, okay, then motion to adjourn.
So move.
Alright, all in favor, aye, 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 we're good.
Bye, see you tonight, Terry, I think we're serving, right?
Six o'clock.
Yep.
See you then.
I'll be your partner in crime.
Yeah, so, six o'clock.
That's definitely fine.
Okay.
You had, I don't know what you said.
Give me a look at, for you, see what you said.
Okay, so we're gonna meet down at the Marlins, or where are we gonna meet?
Uh, for the tour?
Yeah.
Um.
We're gonna start here.
I just need to see if I can get, uh, what do we got? I've got a half, I've got forty minutes. Um, no, I wanted to actually get that, go down there, so. Um, does anybody have, like, I have my four seat car.
I don't have much room in mind right now.
I mean, it's easy if we just do it in one car, so you want, you go to the bathroom, I'll be here. I'll see if Catherine's around.
So the tour is what again?
Uh, just wanted to show you the PPE room. The garden, why, why we're doing what we're doing with the garden, the red barn and that, so I'm gonna go find Catherine. And then go from there, right? Not for, I'm, because she, she.
Okay, great. Let's see, Bob, you are. Not on the schedule. Okay.
What, what is this?
The times they have, that I just can see right here.
This is now for what again, I'm sorry?
Oh, this is for the serving at Maplewood today, but. If you can't do it, it's no problem because you're not on a schedule, so no one's expecting you there.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna have to pass on.
Yeah, exactly, no, works out well.